Like I always do.
You're right.
Slibel, like reliable.
Yes.
Rennie Boldt.
Waiting for Peter.
Water bottles, the lady tower.
So then. There it went.
Interesting.
There it went.
Still in New York. Still in New York, me?
Uh, yes.
All right, executive session was adjourned at six forty-five P M and no action was taken. Would anyone like to nominate someone to be appointed as a temporary chairperson to conduct the election for the board president?
Like to nominate Fallon.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Would anyone like to nominate someone as president of the Board of Education?
I would like to nominate Peter Belanti.
I'll second that nomination.
I'm sorry. Your good names. Who did you nominate?
Peter Belanti. Peter Belanti was nominated for president.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 She should have asked her second nomination.
Yeah.
Were there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? I have a motion and a second to close the nominations.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Hi.
I have a motion and a second to elect Peter Belanti as president of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I, Peter Belanti, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Sweet Home Board of Education according to the best of my abilities. I guess I'm in charge now.
There you go.
Um, okay, so we will be moving on to the election of vice president. Um, I call for nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Sweet Home Central School Board, um, District Board of Education. Um, are, do we have any nominations for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Brian Libel for vice president.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Scott Johnson for the role of vice president.
Any other nominations? Can I have a second on the nominations?
Second.
I hope I'm doing this right. Um, okay, so. Yes. President, I'd like to respectively decline nomination. I appreciate it. Um, I'll be here to support anybody that needs a supporter to go along them. Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, in that case, I would like to, is there a motion to amend the nominations to just Mr. Libel?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Libel.
Thank you. I, Brian Libel, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Sweet Home Board of Education according to the best of my ability. Thanks, Scott.
Cheers.
Yep.
Good job.
Time for musical chairs. So Libel, if you want to grab your.
Okay.
It's so great.
Welcome to the dog path. All right.
Okay.
Please.
Um, next order of business would be the superintendent oath of office. So I believe that would be you, Fallon.
We doing?
I, Michael Janestry, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent of the Sweet Home Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Okay, um, moving on, um, for appointments. I need a motion and a second for the consent agenda of items one through twenty-one.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion. Thank you. Um.
You mind reading the items for us, please?
Excuse me?
Could you just give us the items, please?
Um, so one through ten, or sorry, one through nine is our legal counsel, district clerk, deputy district clerk, district treasurer, deputy district treasurer, treasurer, extracurricular accounts, district auditor, board secretary, and tax collectors. Um, number eleven is our other appointments um, that include or not limited to the chief medical officer, our claims, our auditors, our purchasing agents, um, compliance officers.
Just the topic.
Yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
So then we move on to, uh, number, uh, special education, um, committees, um, committee of special education surrogate parent, um, audit committee, and then moving on to our Board of Education appointments um, for both the Erie County Association of School Boards and the New York State School Board Association, um, our designation of our official bank depositories um, for signatures of checks, um, our bid processes and in open bids, um, bonding of personnel with our insurance company, um, attendance of educational conferences at schools expense, um, the adoption of policies and regulations in effect at the close of the school year, um, our postage, our school lunch program, our petty cash, and our transfer of funds. Are there any questions or discussions?
Uh, just if we can, back to the Board of Education appointments, the Erie County Association of School Boards and New York State School Boards. Is everybody comfortable with those positions? Is there anybody that would prefer change or?
Okay. Fine.
Okay, everybody good?
Yeah, all good, thank you.
Other questions or discussions about the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now continue with our regular, our scheduled voting meeting. Okay. Okay, um, approval of agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, communications, does anyone have any communications to share?
I did hear from a parent, um, that they were very happy with how graduation was. They said that venue is just beautiful and it just added to the experience. And she said it was just a wonderful experience for, for her family. We had plenty of seating, that, that was the big thing.
Okay, um, at this, I do have a communication that I know the whole board um, did receive a letter and we thank a lot of you for, for, um, addressing that letter to us. Um, I do want to say a couple of things that, that we do, um, take the contents of that letter very seriously. Um, we have had some initial meetings as a board to discuss the contents of that letter. Um, we ask that you give us some time to digest and investigate and, and properly respond, um, to, to your letter. Um, and that in our response, we will be looking, um, to invite leadership to meet with the entire school board. Um, we do need to finalize a lot of those plans. Um, but we are working on it, I assure you, this is not taken very lightly. Um, so for those of you that are here, we thank you for coming. Um, and, and that is where we stand right now, so please give us, I know this is an upcoming holiday weekend, please give us some time, um, to meet again as a board and, and and put together a proper, uh, response. So, thank you. Any other communications? Okay, uh, moving on. Um, unfinished business, we have none. Um, so we, that leads us to our superintendent report, so Dr. Janestry, it is all you.
Thank you, Mr. Belanti. Uh, just a quick, uh, couple of updates for the board. Um, we're, uh, happy to once again announce, and I know I put a communication out to families on Friday, uh, that our summer lunch program will begin on July seventh and it will run through August fifteenth. Um, it'll be located at Maplemeere, Glendale, and Sweet Home Middle. Uh, and it will run from ten thirty to eleven fifteen. It's open to all students ages eighteen and younger. Um, and they, they need to come to, uh, those locations uh, and they need to be present and eat their lunches there. Uh, but we will run free lunches throughout the summer, so we're excited about that once again. I want to make sure that everybody capitalizes on that.
So, Dr. Janestry, they don't have to go to that school to get the lunches, right?
They go to one of those three areas to get the lunches.
Those three places.
Yep, yep. Um, we know that the wellness and attendance plans are, uh, in the board packet. Um, the wellness committee met virtually twice, uh, during this year. Uh, there is no change to the wellness and attendance plan, uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Mr. Feldman, I don't know.
No, that's correct, uh, the wellness committee, health and wellness committee did meet virtually, uh, twice this year uh, to review our wellness plan, uh, as well as our attendance procedures. And those, as you all know, are driven from, uh, BOSI's policy. Uh, the BOSI's policy has not changed. Uh, thus, uh, in review, uh, we did not feel as though there were any necessary changes to bring to you. Uh, but we do, uh, that is, this is something, uh, that the board needs to, um, approve each and every year. So we're asking you to just carry forward last year's, uh, plan, um, and procedures for attendance, uh, and vote on those tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Feldman.
Sure.
Any questions? Um, we've also, uh, had our first, our town hall meeting regarding our distraction-free schools, uh, plan. Um, there were about fifteen, twenty members of the community in attendance that night, uh, a lot of good questions. Um, Dr. Wilson, I don't know if you want to take it from here?
Sure, uh, good evening, everyone, um, if you want to go on to the next slide. Um, so just to highlight our committee, I always want to take the time to stop in and thank, um, folks who have, um, volunteered their time. So the members of this committee, they, you see the dates that we met. Um, they gave up time, um, even if they couldn't be there in person, they joined us virtually, um, lent it their voice to, um, looking at our plan. Um, and we presented that plan in full at the last board meeting, but they, but again, at, um, the town hall where we collected, uh, uh, some questions that we added to, I mean, we'll, we'll discuss in a minute. Um, you can go on to the next slide. So here, um, we also have, um, student luncheons at each of the schools in which we're able to engage our students and hear from them, um, during those luncheons, you know, their thoughts about, uh, these, this, the distraction-free school zone plan. Um, and then our members fanned out across their, um, the students that they work with it to share the draft plan that we shared at the board meeting and at the town hall to get more feedback, and we collected questions from the students as well as questions from that town hall. Lots of really great questions, as Dr. Janestry said, um, uh, during the town hall. Some discussion-type questions and some, um, we just, um, dug right into the answers and shared the thoughts of the committee because we had quite, um, the detailed discussion about much of it. So here we have, uh, the rundown, the town hall. Um, we have our presentation on the seventeenth. Um, the goal we get here today, um, we are looking to have the plan that should be adjusted to our next meeting, which I believe is July twenty-fourth, um, in which, uh, we're, the, the policy will be coming to you as, uh, board members um, to review, um, and, and approve or seek approval. Um, and then, once approved, it would go into the code of conduct, um, and then, um, implemented into the school year. We have quite the communication plan ready to go, um, and working with, uh, Christine Slagel, um, to make sure that we have everything in place for each building, building principal, um, as well as folks across the districts to be ready. Questions?
Just wanted to, oh, thank Dr. Wilson and thank you to the task force and the committee for all their hard work, um, in putting this together. Um, you know, we had to move quickly based on the law and, and, uh, they did that work, rolled up their sleeves and got it done. So, um, we, we want to thank all of those members, um, who sat on that task force. And then finally, um, just want to say, uh, we had graduation on Thursday, like Mrs. Jason said. A wonderful night at U B, I just want to, uh, congratulate the class of twenty-twenty-five, um, on a job well done, uh, throughout their high school career and, uh, their time at Sweet Home. So, uh, great night, weather held out for us. Um, that is the actual picture of this year's tossing of the caps, um, and just, uh, a packed auditorium that night, um, at U B to celebrate, um, the class of twenty-five. And there, they are. An official report. Any questions?
I actually just have one for Dr. Wilson. How much money is the state providing for the, I know it's a sore subject, how much? How much are they providing?
I believe it was thirteen million for the whole state, right?
What's our cut?
Our, we believe we are slated to get thirteen thousands, but Mr. Feldman, share with me?
That's about right. Um, you know, the, the guidance from the state, as many of you know, has been slow forthcoming, as is any sort of, generally what happens for that process is we have to, uh, I know that Dr. Wilson had mentioned that we have to submit the plan. Once we, once we likely submit that plan, there'll be, um, guidance on how to, um, get that money. But initially, when the governor put out her proposal back in January as part of the executive, uh, budget, uh, it was about thirteen thousand dollars to help us kind of offset some costs.
So are those costs like communication costs? What kind of costs would we?
So, the committee, great question. The committee, um, discussed, uh, the use of headphones, so distraction-free schools knows it doesn't say just cellphone. It, it's anything that is a, um, internet-enabled device, so headphones, uh, smartwatches, phones, um, all play into that category. And so with our work in the classroom today, um, there are many times when the headphones are needed for different needs, for different things. And so we looked at, could we use that money to support making sure that classrooms have, um, those items in the classroom? And, um, it's not something that students have to, um, supply, and we're not running into the problem of the Wi-Fi-enabled devices.
Okay, thank you.
I know we have to submit this plan to the state by August first, I think, is the deadline?
Yes.
Are they going to be reviewing them too, or just keeping them?
We, we constantly get feedback, um, from the state if they, if they see something. We, we went through and made sure that we checked off each box of, um, the law that we had to have in place. So we believe we're in good shape. Um, there's always opportunity for them, for them to give us feedback.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to upcoming events. Um, obviously this weekend is our Independence Day holiday. Um, moving into August, we have the Dollars for Scholars Golf Outing. Last, did we, are we out, sold out yet, or do we?
Not as of yet. Um, we have probably about six or seven foursomes still available, but it is the largest fundraising event, four dollars for scholars. It's a fun time, uh, good lunch, good dinner, lots of laughs. So if anybody, and you don't even have to be, trust me, you don't have to be a good golfer. Uh, so if anybody's interested, just let us know.
Okay, um, we have the Law Conference on August sixth, new teacher orientation, um, August twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth, and our August High School Graduation, which will be August twenty-second. And then moving into September, we have Labor Day, our first day of school, September second, and then our board meetings, the ninth and the sixteenth. Any questions on the events? Okay, this leads us to open sessions on agenda topics under Board Policy fifteen-twelve. Um, per Board Policy fif- fifteen-ten, this open session is for topics related to tonight's agenda. Um, want to read through the guidelines for public participation in school board meetings. Um, the board does welcome participation by district residents, persons having business within the district boundaries, and persons who do business with the Board of Education. All participants must be sixteen years of age or older. Um, speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer and announce their name, address, and group affiliation if appropriate. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and may not transfer their time to another participant. The board, by resolution, may vote to extend the time of the speaker. Um, participants may register in advance with the district clerk, and I do have a couple of advanced registers. Um, those registering in advance will speak in order of their sign-up. Um, those not signed up will speak afterwards. The total amount of time for each public participation period is thirty minutes. Um, statements should be made to the board president, not individual board members. Participants may discuss specific individuals, or may not, sorry, discuss specific individuals or issues that fall under executive session. Participants must abide by the board, excuse me, the Board of Education policy and the district's code of conduct. Both are available on the district website. The board president does have the right to maintain decorum by interrupting or terminating a visitor's comments, um, requesting an individual to leave or calling for a recess or adjournment of the meeting. Okay, so the first person to sign up was Jen Russell, so Ms. Russell? And Mr. Libel will be the timekeeper.
Hi, my name is Jen Russell. I live at eighty-three Castleton Place in Tonawanda. Um, and I have a junior, a rising senior. And on May twelfth, just before noon, my son came walking through the door of our home. And I asked him, why aren't you in school? He said, well, I have nothing going on this afternoon, so I snuck out with the BOSI's kids, and he drove himself home. As I'm reading him the riot act about leaving school early, there will be consequences, you will be caught. Our phones started blowing up. Texts from parents and students about bombs or guns at the school. Videos of police in riot gear with guns storming the school. Warnings from the U B Police, Amherst Police. And, and social media posts asking us not to come near the school. And then, an email from Mr. Baker, and then another, and that second email I would like to quote. APD is still conducting the search to give us clearance out of an abundance of caution, but all students are safe and accounted for. My student was safe, but he was not accounted for. So we were lied to by the administration in a botched lockdown that it could have had serious consequences had it been a hoax. And then there's a survey from the teachers' union this week with a ninety-seven percent vote of no confidence for the superintendent, which is no surprise if you've been paying attention. But you, the board, with your full chest, will sit there and tell everyone, that's your guy, and extend his contract and give him a raise. You have failed to be accountable to parents, students, staff, and teachers as we tell you, this house is on fire and you're letting it burn. I'm mad because I love this place.
Thank you, um, next person is Mr. Bob Corini.
Uh, I, I would like to know how the district determines the E S Y services. Since moving to the district five and a half years ago, my almost fourteen-year-old daughter has been denied E S Y programs each year. The reason was told to me because only self-contained kids are eligible. Uh, she's had substantial regression and level of function. Functioning is not good. Um, why is the district not able to fund E S Y programs or send my daughter to BOSI's for the summer? Uh, the previous districts I've been in, uh, always funded BOSI's after the E S Y was determined.
Um, thank you, Mr. Corini. Um, next is Mr. Mike Fisher.
All right, good evening, y'all. Um, I first want to say I'm here as a voice of positivity and presuming positive intentions, sharing my own personal experiences, um, as both an educator and a parent in the Sweet Home School District. I've worked with thousands of teachers and administrators across the country, and I can confidently say, Sweet Home is the sweet spot. We have incredible diverse students, passionate and talented educators, and strong leaders. I feel fortunate that my children attend school here. I want to publicly voice my full support and confidence in the superintendent, the director of curriculum, and the high school principal. Their leadership, in my experiences with them, is grounded in a deep commitment to what matters most, our students. Being an administrator is difficult work, and the measurement of effectiveness of that work from the outside looking in is almost always quantitative in nature. From the inside, the real measure of effectiveness is qualitative, personalized, situational, and often going the extra mile with efforts to do what is best for kids first and then the system. The kids are the reason the system exists, and as an educator for thirty years now, doing what is best for kids is my singular mantra when making decisions in my work. I wholeheartedly believe that our leaders are all of the students-first mindset. The high school principal came to Sweet Home with a reputation for compassion, and I believe that he's lived up to it. I've seen it firsthand, whether supporting the P T A, participating in C S E meetings, or showing care for individual students, including mine. He leads with a heart. The director of curriculum has been a trusted colleague, and I've known, um, her through our work with, uh, committees at Erie One BOSI's, her work with students around curriculum, fostering a sense of belonging and D E I leadership. I see how deeply she advocates for students behind the scenes, work that often goes unseen, but it does not go unfelt. I met the superintendent during his interview, and what stood out to me then and has continued to sent to since is how often he talks about children, their voices, their experiences, and he's always at all the events. That focus of his has not wavered. Beyond qualitative personal stories, I also looked at the quantitative district data, which all of you can do at data.nisid.gov. Over the past three years, student performance at both the middle and high school has trended upward. Region scores are strong, especially in middle school where they're consistently in the nineties. At the high school, we're matching or exceeding state averages across the board. Uh, there, there were a couple of blips and improvement areas. Uh, and then our chronic absenteeism in Sweet Home is on a downward trend, where other districts are seeing it ramp up. That's not happening by accident. Of course, these results reflect the hard work of these teachers. Um, but teachers thrive in systems that support them, and I believe that Sweet Home is one of those systems. That's a credit to the leadership team and the thoughtful student decisions that I think that they do make. Like any family, I don't think that we always agree, but what matters is how we come together, especially when it's challenging.
The end of your time, sir.
Our children are watching us, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Thank you, Ben. Um, the next speaker is Ms. Janet Spence.
Thank you. First time here, I have a number of questions for the board.
First time here, I have a number of questions for the Board. What are the next steps after the vote of no confidence? When there are lead administrators, the main administrators for this site, where 97% of the people who are working for or with them have no confidence in their abilities to run? What do you guys do? Does this go up to New York State? Does it go to the Department of Education? My background is nursing. We take it to the office of professions. What do you guys do? My understanding is that you guys knew of the results of this vote, yet there was only a response to the teachers after Channel 2 posted their article. Is it true that you guys are voting or have voted on raises for two out of three of the people where the vote for no confidence was so high? And related to the miscommunication that I perceive related to the safety event, some people have spoken to it. I was told people entered the building after the situation was announced. Why was this allowed? No confirmations of student locations, people left, as was discussed. People were pulled into rooms with the teachers, very appropriate, but at no point did I hear that anybody ever surveyed to see where those students were when they were not in the assigned room they should have been in. No communication. I'm told that there was an announcement that said, all clear, you can dismiss the students, all clear. And my understanding is that is not your process. Your process is that the Amherst Police Department have to come and physically state, okay to leave the room, okay to leave the room. I'm told that didn't happen. I'm also told that the Amherst Police Department was extremely agitated and upset and frustrated with the way that leadership managed this event. Do you guys do RCAs? Do you do root cause analysis? How do you determine how you're going to improve this for the future? All I heard Dr. Janesty saying in text was that, if I can read this correctly. During this time, we made certain that all students were safe and accounted for. After classrooms were cleared by threat of the threats by APD, we called a shelter in place. Again, this is what was communicated to the community, but I'm hearing that is not in actuality what occurred. I think that this helps ground me in why people that work in this district don't have a level of confidence in their leadership. Was the mental health position maintained? I heard that it was because one of the teachers agreed, I think it worked out for them, but they agreed to essentially retire.
I'm sorry, that's the end of the allotted time.
So I look forward to your responses to my questions.
That fulfills the speakers that have signed up. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hello, Paul Simandera, the Sweet Home Education Association. I'd like to point out the error in the superintendent's report, that we are not the Educators Association, or the Education Association is our title. Peter, first, before I begin, I'd like to say thank you for your opening comments, nonetheless. I'm here tonight to speak plainly and directly about the deepening crisis of leadership in our district. As educators, we're trained to look for patterns, ask hard questions, model civic principles we teach, and the pattern here is unmistakable. Systemic dysfunction, repeated disregard for staff voice, and a leadership team more committed to public relations than to real substantive change. Let me be clear, 97% of the educators in this district do not have confidence in the superintendent or assistant superintendent. That number should alarm every single person on this board. It reflects not just dissatisfaction, but a complete collapse of trust in those charged with guiding our schools. And yet, despite the overwhelming vote of no confidence, this board has voted just last week to grant tenure to the Assistant Superintendent and is scheduled tonight to extend and renew the superintendent's contract. What message does this send? To us, it says that the voices of hundreds of professionals in this district are being ignored in favor of preserving the status quo. No one will see your vote to extend his contract as supporting a failed superintendent, but rather a statement against the trust and values of our teachers. Equally troubling is the Board of Education's silence. Despite numerous formal communications from the Teachers Union, thoughtfully written, data-supported, and solution-focused, the Board has failed to respond at all, not a single acknowledgement. This silence beaks volumes. It tells educators, students, and families that their concerns do not matter. The Board is quick, however, to conduct emergency meetings to put staff members on administrative leave. You have indeed operationalized. Dismissal doesn't have to be difficult. You have mocked us at board retreats, you have talked negatively about us within an earshot of community members, and seem to pretend that the Teachers Union is only a few loud voices. 350 voices is not a mere few. What will it take for you to take the teacher's voice seriously? Suddenly, following a vote of no confidence, we see a fury of performative engagements from the superintendent, emails, building visits, and sudden invitations to dialogue. But here's the truth, even now, he refuses to directly acknowledge, address, or provide solutions to the very real, well-documented problems facing our schools. This is not leadership, this is damage control. Our district has invested tremendous resources in time and money with Leader in Me program. With the central tenets of trust, accountability, shared vision, these are nowhere to be found in our current leadership. You cannot preach Stephen Covey's habits when violating them in practice. You cannot talk about seeking first to understand while ignoring hundreds of voices asking to be heard. This disconnect between words and actions is why morale continues to plummet, why talented educators are leaving, and why families are losing faith in this district. We needed a leadership that does more than manage perception. We need a leadership that tells the truth, owns its failures, and works collaboratively to move forward. According to New York State's Board Association Model, Code of Ethics, the Board members must make decisions based on what is in the best interest of the community stakeholders, including employees and teachers. We need your leadership. We need you to represent the best interests of our entire community. We need to stop being so beholden to a person or people who have turned Sweet Home ship the wrong way. Until that happens, we will keep speaking up loudly, clearly, and together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simandera. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time?
My name is Mallory Pizarik, and I'm a Mabel Mir teacher. On May 27th, the Board of Education expressed full support to Dr. Janesty and Dr. Wilson, stating there was no evidence to justify a vote of no confidence. Tonight, I offer just one perspective and explain why I cast that vote. On May 23rd, 2023, the district posted a PR coordinator position of $73,610 with a bachelor's degree. At the time, I had a master's, 11 years of experience, and was making $53,723. The next day, after nearly five months of bargaining, Dr. Janesty declared an impasse that hadn't happened in over 20 years. The message was clear, public image over public service. That fall, Dr. Janesty received a $25,000 raise while teachers worked without a contract. Now he's received another, despite 97% of staff expressing no confidence. This isn't about performance, it's about priorities, and we aren't one of them. Yet, despite frozen budgets and fewer resources, we're rising. Since 2018, Mabel Mir has climbed from number 75 to number 23 in the business first rankings. We serve the largest elementary population in the district with 100 more students than any building. Yet your reward is losing two teaching sections and cutting our program aid support from six to two. Meanwhile, the district told the public programming would remain unchanged. That's not maintaining, that's dismantling. Program aids are vital, from curriculum days to progress monitoring MTSS, which is part of your own strategic plan. At just one building, staff tracked from November to June that 93 out of 139 days required two or more program aides or building-based subs just to keep instruction running, and still there is no plan for next year's shortage. Let's be clear, our success is not because of district leadership. It's because of principals like Jim Ryan, who see our worth and fight for us in rooms we aren't in. It's because of our instructional coaches and my colleagues doing the work every day. When district administrators do show up, it's often with the PR coordinator snapping photos, then gone. The appearance of connection has replaced the work of actually building it. I've read the strategic plan, but I still don't know the vision. What I do know is the hex code for Panther Navy and how to punctuate the mission statement. But I don't need branding guidelines to know what it means to be a Panther. I was raised here. I gave up tenure to return here. I send my kids here. So while the superintendent throws a hail mary promising a new era of transparency and Dr. Wilson stays silent, know this, the time to lead began the day they were appointed. We don't want more task forces or committees, we won't fix problems we didn't create. You ask for proof? Tonight, I give you mine. I ask you reflect on my words and the 325 others who voted no confidence. My career has been built on figuratively and literally teaching students to find their voice. Now I ask you not only to listen to mine, but to use yours. To close, I echo the words of someone who knows what it means to lead. Be good, do good, go Panthers.
Thank you, I believe you had.
Thanks so much, Mallory and Paul. My name is John Elliott. I teach science at Sweet Home High School. My reason for speaking tonight is to try to give some context to the Board about the survey results you received. You received a survey first from the high school staff, and then that was followed up by survey results from the district at large. As I put this talk together, I struggled to try to pick an anecdote to share with you to sort of illustrate some of the reasons for the surveys and for the votes of no confidence. And it wasn't, I didn't struggle for a lack of trying to find one, but for there being an overwhelming number of anecdotes to share. Like, what should I discuss? Should I discuss, we were grappling with unrest in the high school following the outbreak of hostilities between Hamas and Israel when Jewish families were fleeing our district? Dr. Janesty read the high school faculty a speech directing us not to speak to the media? Should I discuss how the LGBTQ community was horrified by the decision last spring to not let students wear their rainbow tassel, a signal of their identities in a district that values diversity, equity, and inclusion, to graduation last year when they had done it for years prior? Should I discuss the outsourcing of superintendent duties and responsibilities such as negotiations and superintendent conference hearings? Or should I discuss the safety issues and the lack of disciplinary action here at the high school? How, following an altercation between a student and another student that required numerous adults in handcuffs to resolve, staff members were placed on leave for weeks on end, but the students involved did not miss a day of class? Should I discuss a lockdown riddled with inconsistencies? Or maybe I should talk about the multiple years over the past four years when the high school did not run a single spring fire drill? Are our children safe at Sweet Home High School? How can parents feel confident the school is safe when staff members have been directed to not intervene in physical altercations? In the end, I could not pick a single issue to discuss. We at the high school, we have our own experience, it has not been good. But I feel that Dr. Janesty is attempting to make this a high school issue, but I want to be very clear, this is a district-wide issue, as you can see from those gathered here today. This is exemplified by 97% of the faculty having no confidence in Dr. Janesty or Dr. Wilson. We urge the Board of Education to consider this and to speak to the teachers without Speak to the elected representatives. We are not careerists, we are not opportunists, we're teachers, we're here to help children, we're here to help the families in this school district. The high school has a tremendous faculty. I've worked in several schools, it's by far the best group of teachers I've ever worked with, and the students in our district are amazing and diverse and wonderful. We have high standards for what our students and family deserve from a Sweet Home experience. For four years, they have not been getting it. It's time to change that.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Good evening. My name is Danae Zaplo, and I'm here with several colleagues from the middle school. We're all teachers and also serve various leadership roles, representing over 80 educators in our building. We're here tonight to share the concerns that led to a recent vote of no confidence in the superintendent and assistant superintendent. This decision was not made lightly. It reflects persistent and serious concerns across several areas in our building: communication, personnel, budget and curriculum, and overall staff morale. I will be speaking about those first two areas tonight. Communication has been one of the most urgent concerns. During last month's district-wide survey, 94% of Sweet Home teachers responded that district leadership does not communicate directly and transparently with staff. This concern is reflected at the middle school in the following example. In both the spring and fall of 2023, repeated failures in safety communication left staff uninformed about serious incidents, including bomb threats and reports of weapons on our school campus. These situations demanded leadership visibility and clear immediate guidance. Unfortunately, that leadership presence was missing. While voluntary staff meetings with district staff would occur immediately following these incidents, little information was made available at that time, and a lack of follow-through resulted in no lasting change to ensure the safety of students and staff. Last month, 97% of Sweet Home teachers responded that district-level leaders do not understand the real-time day-to-day challenges. At the middle school, personnel shortages have severely impacted our ability to manage daily operations. Class sizes in some areas are so large that both safety and instructional delivery have become a concern. We do not have enough staff to offer the amount of academic support services warranted by our students' testing results. A shortage of substitutes has been an ever-present issue since the full-time return to school after the pandemic. This school year, program aides have been pulled out of classrooms and from their duties to serve as both daily and long-term substitutes. Long-term substitute positions have been filled by teachers not certified for that subject area, and a lack of per diem substitutes has resulted in daily emails to our teaching staff asking to help cover classes. When there are not enough people to fill the need, consultant teacher positions are not covered, leaving one teacher to do the job of two that day. My colleague will continue with our thoughts.
Good evening, my name is Neil McLaughlin. I work at the middle school. I'm going to continue with Danae just mentioned. Across Sweet Home, 92% of teachers responded to the district office that the district office staff does not understand and support our classroom needs and/or programs. This concern is reflected at the middle school in the following example, instructional materials, including textbooks and academic kits that have been ordered out of teacher input, sending a clear message that our expertise is neither trusted nor valued. Many of these resources were never used. In January of this year, we were notified of a budget freeze with no context or communication. Teachers were potentially left without instructional resources, and no clear explanation was provided for the freeze, leaving us scrambling to meet the needs within our classrooms. As a result of everything mentioned, morale is at an all-time low. As of June, our survey, 95% of our teachers do not believe that the superintendent or assistant superintendent contribute to and help create a positive working environment. Staff members feel unheard, unsupported, and dismissed. Staff feel this way and therefore have voted for a vote of no confidence. It's not about one event, it reflects a sustained pattern of leadership decisions that have undermined trust and compromised our ability to serve students effectively. The Sweet Home we knew, where communication and trust were the foundation, no longer exists in our current reality. We ask the Board to take these concerns seriously. Our students and staff deserve better leadership and a district built on transparency, collaboration, and respect. And with that, I thank you.
That, Ms. Corcoran, thank you for your second.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Corcoran, and I'm a science teacher at the middle school. As a veteran teacher of over 25 years in the district, my longevity affords me a perspective that is unique. The statement I am going to read was carefully crafted by myself and by myself and a few of my compassionate colleagues who want to advocate for our students. It is our contention that this district-level administration has made a series of decisions that not only reflect a lack of transparency, but also a disregard for the well-being of our students and their families. These choices have had profound negative effects, undermining the quality of education and the trust of our community by prioritizing interests that do not serve our children. It is evident that the administration's focus has strayed from its primary mission: Supporting our students' growth and success. Over the past four years, there has been mounting frustration regarding the lack of effective leadership and transparency from our district-level administrators. This discontent is illustrated starkly in the recent vote of no confidence, where an alarming 97% of teachers expressed their distrust in the current administration. Such overwhelming dissent cannot be ignored, nor can this implication of this crisis be underestimated. The secrecy surrounding decision-making processes has eroded the foundation of trust that is essential for a thriving educational environment. When critical decisions are made behind closed doors without the input of teachers, parents, and students, we risk alienating those who are the backbone of our schools. This administration's failure to communicate openly and create an atmosphere of uncertainty and fear, disheartening both educators and families alike. Traditionally, securing a teaching position at Sweet Home has been regarded as a prestigious honor. However, we are now witnessing a troubling trend with educators actively seeking opportunities in other school districts. This shift not only undermines the professionalism within our schools, but more importantly, has adverse effects on our students and their families that we serve. It is essential to recognize that our thriving middle school environment and region's test scores, as stated by Mr. Fisher, exist not because of our district administration, but rather in spite of it. The strength of our achievements can be attributed entirely to the dedication and leadership of our middle school administration and its teachers. The educators in our district embody a dedication to their students and a passion for teaching that should be supported by strong leadership. The current state of affairs, however, demonstrates a gross disconnect. If we continue on this path, we risk losing not just our talented educators, but also the morale and the trust of our families and our students. Thank you.
One sec.
Okay.
And extend the time.
Certainly.
Extend the time.
I think so. Yeah, we can extend.
It's our time. It's our time. We've all got three minutes.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you. I just needed to get a legal ramification question.
Oh, okay.
So we are at our 30 minutes. Well, sorry, 27 minutes. So at this time, this would be the last speaker in this session.
Okay.
Unless...
I'd like to make a motion to extend the time.
I'll second it.
Before we extend the time, how many more speakers?
I think we can.
Okay. So I see three more. So that would be 10 more minutes. So we will extend. Do I have a motion to extend our time to for 10 minutes?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the three that rose, raised their hands. I know Ms. Stevens.
Maitre Ban.
Jamie.
Jamie Mancine. And then, ma'am. Okay. Those will be our last three speakers for this open session.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. You may begin.
Hi, I'm Lori Petraszewski, formerly Lori Tabazinski, as Mr. Raymond might know my dad art. Hi. I just wanted to say, I came without planning to say anything, but once I heard what the teachers had to say, I feel that I need to say what my son came home one day and said to me from the middle school, because it breaks my heart. He came home and said, "Mom, if somebody tries, wants to beat me up, what should I do?" And I said, "Ben, what do you mean?" "Well, I'm afraid. If somebody beats me up, I'm going to get in a lot of trouble." My son is, he's talkative like me. He's outgoing, but he's afraid. I mean, I think that kind of says something. And I'm also been a substitute, and I've been in all of the schools, except for the high school and Heritage Heights. And I see how, I mean, how sad the teachers are. They work so hard. And I've been in the classrooms where I've seen kids biting teachers. I've been in a classroom where I've seen kids just run out, and these teachers, they have no control of these, you know, some of these students. And I'm not saying all the students are, you know, uneasy to handle, but it makes me sad. It really does. And I worry for the safety. I mean, if my son, who is a chatty thing, if he's saying something like that, and I talk to other parents, because I'm chatty too. I'm on the middle school PTA. I've been on Maplemeier PTA. I've been in the school districts for 14 years, because I have a graduate from 2019. My son, that's now 24, wasn't afraid when he was in the middle school. Wasn't afraid. But my 12-year-old that's going to seventh grade is. I mean, we preach those habits, those leadership habits. What are the consequences to your actions? And I've seen it, unfortunately, when I've been at the middle school, that there are none for the students. And it, I mean, from one experience, there was a student who was not listening to the teacher, and I had to walk the student down to the principal's office, and there was an activity at the end of the day. Well, the student was allowed to go to that activity. And why? So in this girl, in this student was talking about fighting another student. Why would you let a student out of that office when you know that it is a possibility? I saw those kids together, and I said, "Listen, be friends. Be kind to each other. That's what we need. Do not be against each other. Be kind to each other." And I think that's like the big thing. What are we going to do to protect the little ones that are afraid? And these teachers that give it their all, that they don't get any backing. It makes me sad. And I know a lot of other parents that I've talked to have said the same thing. So thank you for listening.
Ms. Stevens?
Hello. Jessica Stevens, by the way. I'm a parent in the district. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I, after listening to everybody else speak, I do have to say something. After the vote of no confidence, I don't see how Sweet Home can move forward without a change in leadership. My children will be entering middle school and high school next year. These are big changes for my children, and I don't want them attending a school where tension, this tension exists between our teachers and leadership. I'm worried about the safety of my children, as we've seen how poorly past instances have been handled. We've been losing teachers left and right. We will continue to lose teachers until something is done. I can't speak for all parents, but I can tell you that, in addition, many parents also agree with the teachers, and we do want change. I do try not to act on emotion, but rather logic, and I hear what the teachers are saying. I'm listening, and I support this. If we're going to make a change, we also, we need to move fast, because if there is going to be a change in leadership, we need to fill those roles so that the students will have a cohesive group of teachers and leadership that can move forward. Thank you. Again, I didn't really plan anything, so brief and to the point.
Hello, I'm Jamie Mancine. I live at 276 Glen Haven, and I am a parent. I did plan to speak tonight, and these are some tough acts to follow, but I'm going to try. As I mentioned, I'm a parent, a relatively new parent in the district, as we just joined the district last year. I know I've spoken on several occasions and addressed the board in different facets, and usually speak very openly and off-script. Tonight is a bit different for me, as I prepare to ensure that I wholeheartedly express all of the important talking points I hope to share with you tonight. As many people know, it's now become public knowledge that the teachers have spoken out via their vote of no confidence, that they do not have the confidence in our current leadership. And although I hope it's not the case, I'm sure many people can relate to not always seeing eye to eye with your boss. You might not always agree with their decisions and might have to follow on things that you don't agree with. But at what point do you reach where enough is enough? Where is the breaking point? And for these amazing, incredible teachers, that is now. I stand before you tonight to make sure our board is aware that, as a parent in this district, I stand with the teachers. I have shared on many occasions with the board how incredibly life-changing the staff and teachers at Sweet Home are, even some in this room, particularly those who work with my child. In the most recent correspondence to the board, I shared that not all superheroes wear capes, and it's clear that our teachers are the biggest superheroes around. But it takes a village, and our supporting teaching staff, from librarians to special teachers, to program aides, to classroom aides, even our building-based subs, all directly positively impact my child's education, and they deserve more, and they deserve better. Cutting supportive positions in the building, even if everyone still has a job, is not supporting our teachers. Making PR appearances at the building but not showing up frequently and having meaningful and engaging dialogue with the front lines of our buildings is not supporting our teachers. Not providing them the deserved benefits, pay, and recognition for their incredible efforts despite not having the support from their leadership is not supporting our teachers. And extending the contract of the person impacting their negative experience that they voiced in the workplace and giving them a raise while eliminating positions that impact them and our children is certainly not supporting our teachers. Board, I urge you to reflect and to think to yourself, even if you don't have all the info, would a group of teachers run the risk of retaliation in their livelihood to do a no-confidence vote at such alarming response rate if the reasoning was not serious? This is a serious cry for help. Please consider those who do the real work in our buildings, the one who grow our future little leaders, the ones who make the biggest impacts and reconsider this raise and extension. And I further urge you to do your research and hear feedback. Thank you. And do hear feedback of your constituents and those who make the biggest impact on the district, of their lack of confidence in their current leadership, and vote to terminate those contracts. Teachers, thank you. Thank you for all that you do, and know that I stand with you always. You are seen, and now it's time for the board to do what's right, even if it's challenging to stand for you too.
Hello. My name is Tracy Colleymore, 146 Florence Lane. I'm a parent. And I also did not have anything prepared to say tonight, but I also stand with the teachers. I'm sitting next to my son's favorite teacher, and I can say, I've been in this district since 2021, and since 2021, I have not had confidence in this district. None whatsoever. Some of you have probably seen my name before, because I've emailed you two, three, four, or five times, and copied you on different things. My husband and I was in a situation a couple of days after the lockdown, and we're still waiting for the principal of the high school to get back to us on that situation. Unacceptable. Unacceptable. And I truly hope that when you started the meeting, you asked the teachers if they can give you more time. And I was like, I said to myself, this all sounds familiar. It's like you get this runaround, you know, I'm gonna get back to you. I'm gonna get back to you. I really hope that you get back to them. And I really hope that you come up with a detailed plan that says, give us a week to review this, and then after a week, this is going to take place, and then after that, this is going to take place. Because just to ask for something and to not say and give anything, that comes from the head, and then that gets trickled down to us parents. And that's what we get from administration. We don't get the follow-up that should happen. I've been in education. I've been around education all my life. My mother was a Buffalo Public School teacher. She retired after 33 years once COVID hit. I am a business manager at an 853 charter school. I've been around education all the time, and what I see from administration is not okay. And so today, I say I stand with the parents. And with the teachers.
Okay. Thank you all for speaking. At this time, I would like to deviate a little bit for the agenda. We were going to go to executive session afterwards. We would like to go to executive session now for a brief time to discuss matters of personnel. Do I have any motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will be returning as quickly as possible. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Get in there, it's fine.
That is great. And it's good for him to, you know, see other people come through and because my sister, so she's still like, she goes to a camp every summer and like works with kids who have it, and it's like across the whole country, you know? And some like, you know, people are celebrities, they go and talk to kids. I'm not sure what the name of it is, but I know she, she goes and it's like a nice meeting. I know there's kids, you know, kids and adults who have it. Yeah. 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 Absolutely.
Have you met my wife?
Yes.
Oh.
I heard you tell him.
Just leave the personnel. The personnel issues.
Way back in the day.
We're back in the
Fight.
I'm saying.
Oh my gosh, yes.
Oh yeah, me too. Oh, that would've been awesome. Pork sauce.
I have zero problem with that. Because you know what they also didn't do?
Oh, my gosh, how are you?
Right. Actually, it's so powerful. Off the clock, that's all right. That's for leisure time.
That's good, that's good.
Frank, when it's red.
I know where this is.
So they made that choice. Gotta lose the LBs. And we'll talk after.
No, thanks.
The island, they all go away. Okay, no, it's actually. Not a real draw. Yeah.
But it's just. And then I don't. Because they're going a few days ahead of me.
Holy shit, the red eggs. Really? How long a flight? How long a flight for Vegas?
That's the apartment supposed to sleep.
Only four? Check that. Making progress, yes. I get. I told you about that before. Oh, no, my head hit the pillow last night. Midnight one o'clock. So you put the name. Oh, yeah. Yeah. What's that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. Just wanted to say their parents' case. It's like flying to Mexico. Need all this shrubbery. When we were in. Pretty close. Close. Uh? Yeah, it's fine. I know they are, yeah. Yeah. Yep, 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 yep. You can go on a website, name. Radio tab.
No, I'm sorry. Like, no, I think.
That's where we're going. Real, you know. Yeah. We saw. Owls and. Well. We might break down the. Yeah, it's a. But, yeah. I think we're there. I think we're there. No, but the, the one mom did. Well, the baby. A lot of. Yeah. Of course. I think we're. Oh, school. I, it was tough being. It was. That was. You feel like. Stabbing. Oh, you could.
Well, no. I did. You know. So. But. He's nice. Oh, I guess.
Yeah.
Man.
Do you like?
I live.
Oh. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Nice. Fuck. You could just put like that, huh? Kind of work down and then. I love.
Get it. Something from the old class.
I got some stamp. I go, right?
Carrie.
Got to connect. It's a, it's a second story. It, it was, uh, oh, yes. That's relatively saying. It was the house building. I, this, that was. Yeah, it's, it's all done. It's seen its lifetime. Good. Quick, please. Yeah, that's strong. It's. Well, they. Yeah. Yeah. It's. Grab, oh, yeah, you grab something. No, uh, new feeling. No, it's. I'm not, that's why I haven't done it yet. Still figuring that out. It is a house. I'm just trying to figure out what to do first. And. I think I just have to pull up a decking first. Yeah, right? Yeah, right? Yeah. Well, cause it's up there. Like the deck, right? It's a walkout. It's a walkout between. The deck is a boost. Yeah. So I think I'll pull the decking up first. Then just kind of just. It's my face. Grab me the safest thing. You know? Wow, good. Make the. Figure. Yeah, bizarre. In my head, yeah. Yeah. Well, attached tiered, um. To where the attached garage is. It's lower. If the. So you can walk out that side. It's probably about six or, six or eight inches. The. Yeah. Yeah. And I, I put. I agree. I'm gonna have to dig. I said, well, that's. The red one or. The guy used to look for. Well, he's got a tractor. Put it all together. It's got a. It's got a piece of machinery. All grass across me. Sweet. I may have. Or at least. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. And then, yes. And I'd like to be like a little deck. We'll see. No, the hot tub would be out by the. The hot tub. I'd be. Has some clothes. Uh, layers. I don't know. I don't know. See, yeah. I father wise scaffolding. I forget those scaffolding. You'll see there. Then I think I'm the. You know, uh. The clothes over here. It's over here. Right. Stairs. That'll come off this end. The deck. Right. Well, that goes. That great. Oh, there's. There. I think they go from stairs. Gotcha. Well, we have to die. But. Right. Oh, it's. Right. Right. It's safe. It's safe. Right. Stubby babe. If you. Yeah. That's good idea. Sorry. Yeah, love that. Yeah. Yeah. And am I due? I'm already. Yeah, who said? Just said they hit. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's like one piece of slade. Sure. Call me take apart. They're actually taking. Oh, it's a half. Yeah. Good. Wow. Ah. So they have, uh, Cedar sign. The presence of truth. Uh. Let's say it's home.
Okay. I didn't even see you back there.
Oh, thanks.
Where are we?
Yeah, I'm gonna wait for anything else. Wait for.
Fallon. Waiting for Fallon?
Yeah, we're waiting on Fallon. That's you. Yeah, let me know when you're all set. Okay. Okay, thank you guys, uh, for the delay. Um, and I just, you know, before we move on, I just wanted to say that. Um, although we are not unable to respond in the moment, um, tonight. The board has listened carefully to your comments and concerns. And we want to reiterate what was stated earlier. That we as a board will commit to discussing, investigating concerns and meeting with. Our Shea leadership with the objective of moving the district forward. Um, on that note, we will move on to new business. Um, may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda of items A through O?
To move?
Second. Um, okay, so is there any discussion on A through O? I will go through. Um, A is special education, classroom and preschool placements. Um, B is bids policy fifty-four, ten, our cooperative bids. Um, with Erie One Boses, I Orleans Niagara Boses, Erie County, Amherst. School District, Williamsburg School District and other bids. As authorized by general municipal law. Um. C is our pre-kindergarten programming. Um, D is our school board meeting dates. Um, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. E is our mail service provider. F, F is our uniformed contract, guard contract. Sorry. Um, G is our school resource officer contract. Um, H is our local wellness guidelines, policy fifty-six, sixty-one. Um, I is our attendance procedures. J is our school breakfast and lunch prices for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. K is our extracurricular activity accounts, which I believe we are closing. Um, the class of twenty-five account, the multicultural club account, virtual. Enterprise Wrestling Club and Heritage Heights Ghana Club. Um, L is the superintendent's fourth amendment. Um, M is acceptance of donation. Um, which I believe are. Eight trees that are being donated for the tennis program. Um, N is dis. Posel of obsolete property. And O is the use of tax. Um, cursive reserve funds. Yeah, one question, is that number up from previous years, that hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars or?
Uh, it's up slightly from last year and due in large part to the reassessment. Uh, at the town. Uh, last year we did, uh, about a hundred and seven thousand dollars in, uh, tax refunds.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close? Abstentions? Okay. Moving on to our informational items. Mary Ann, would you like to start?
Um, I'll wait for, so it's a little quieter. Um, the only thing I attended was graduation, which was great when you see kids that you know were, were struggling. Entering high school, even elementary school, to see them walk across the stage is really, that, that's what we're here for. So, and that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Just a couple of things, um, the Ready Academy graduation over at the middle school, I loved it. It was awesome to be able to see the teachers and the counselors and the advisors. Work with the kids and explain what they did to get through and how they've, how they've grown in the program. So that was awesome for the thirteen kids who graduated from over there. And I, the distraction free school zones plan in our meeting that we had, I thought we got some real good input from the public there. It was definitely well worth the time that we spent in there.
Amy.
Um, I also attended graduation. It was a very emotional and moving evening, as it always is. Um, I think it was beautifully done and the speakers did amazing. I also attended the special graduation we had today and, uh, equally moving. It was amazing to see the amount of kids and family support that showed up. It was unfortunate that, you know. Some of our, our staff did not make it, but I understand they all have other things going on in the summer months. So, um, other than that. Everything else. Status quo.
Dirk.
I, uh, well, I also attended graduation. That's what I think being on the school board's all about. Very, uh, again, emotional even. For me with really no children in the district, but to see a lot of wonderful kids move on in life is, it's special. Um, I think that's why we spend the time and energy to be here, so. We appreciate, uh, that opportunity. Also attended the Erie County, uh, Association of School Boards annual dinner. I think I was the only one there from the district, which. Guess to be a little lengthy in some of the awards they give. They did give me a, a. Rising Star Award, which I asked them to double check that. They said, nah, you. Has something to do with attending. Uh, some of the events. And speaking of that, if I could. Uh, there are some things in, in New York that, you know, I think board members. If they can find the time should attend some of this. There's leadership conferences, there's law conferences. And there's also national conventions and, uh, usually in some nice spots in the. Early spring and again, we used to attend those on a regular basis. And also in, uh, New York, we had, again, I think we're in, uh, Mike did, I don't know if you signed me up or not, but I'd like going to that.
Registration is the eighteenth of August, so we'll reach out and we wanna, um,
Registration is the eighteenth of August, so we'll reach out and we wanna, um, so if you, if any of the board is interested. Let me or Fallon know, um, cause we wanna get on that right away, cause hotel's booked.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, again, I think especially if you're new to the board, it's. It, it's good background information and ideas you get from other districts around the state and the country.
National is November?
No, they're in April.
April.
Yeah, April.
Okay, I think it's the first weekend in April this year. Okay.
Does it come back to Buffalo next year? If it's in New York?
I don't wanna say Syracuse.
That's what I thought.
I thought they were just doing between New York and Buffalo. Cause Syracuse was, that'd be nice. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Oh, and I did complete my required training, I, uh. I did. I did the finance, I figured out how to do it online, so I didn't have to spend my six hours on a Saturday.
You had to take the fourth training again, even though you took it before.
What's that?
You had to take the fourth training again?
Yes.
Cause it's newly real, okay, interesting.
I fought, I fought it, but they made me do it anyways, so anyways, thank you. That's all I had, thanks.
Danny?
Um, not a whole lot this month, I attended graduation, it was my first one, it was beautiful, I sobbed, I ugly cried, thank you for getting that on camera. Christine. Um, but it was my son's daughter, I got to, or I'm sorry, my son's daughter, my son's girlfriend, I got to give her her diploma, so I sobbed like a baby and it was glorious. Um, so congratulations to everybody who graduated.
Brian?
Yeah, um, I also attended graduation and a number of other year end events, um, the two items I wanted to mention. Um, that probably are not on everybody's radar, very exciting audit committee meeting. June twenty-fourth and, um, we have our new, um, appointed auditor. Bon, uh, Bonadillo, uh, was one of them, um, a, a, as well as our existing auditors, um, from Tronconi and, uh. Or, and yeah, it's Tronconi, so, um, yeah, I think, I think, um, from everything at that meeting, this was just kind of a initial. Meeting to get things moving forward for the next, um, the year. And, um, you know, I think it went really well and, you know, pleased with, um, at least the start of the meeting and how, you know, and the organization and. You know, what they're presenting as far as, um, uh. You know, their areas that they're gonna look at and whatnot, so we can get more into that as the year goes on and as they. As they, um, visit with us. The other piece I wanted to just mention that probably doesn't get mentioned much, much, and I know this through my daughter, uh, my youngest daughter. Who will be attending kindergarten next year is the, um, this kindergarten screening process, which I just wanna commend because. Um, you know, it, it can be, um, nervous for the kids or somewhat, um, you know, a little bit of uncertainty. One is, um, you know, with the pre-K program, I think that's, you know, we have a lot of kids coming in that goes a long way, but for my daughter who didn't attend pre-K here. They just did a great job and, um, making her feel comfortable and, and, you know, I have. A lot of confidence that she'll be well placed and, um, and, uh, not, not only her, but it, it, the point is, is that. You know, there's a lot of unsung things that happen. Like kindergarten screening and all of these things that make a difference, such a big difference in these kids', um, lives and how they get started early on, it can really have an impact.
Okay, thank you, um, myself, it was. Um, I know, I think we mentioned it, but we had the tenure reception before our last meeting. Um, I attended the graduation, which for the record, I did not cry. Put that on the, put that on the record, um, I, we, I, um, with, you know, Mrs. Vettagley, I attended the, uh. Special graduation ceremony this morning, um, it was great, there was probably about twenty-five. Friends, uh, and even more family there. Um, I think Dr. Janestry noted in his, um, little speech that, um, he would not have had as many, um, family and friends there with him, um, you know. In the terrible circumstances that befell him on graduation night. Um, and that's it. For me, so, um, moving on, um, open session number two is our policy fifteen twelve. Um, would anyone like to address the board, um, again, um, as I read earlier, you have three minutes and please state your name, address and relationship to Sweet Home if you would like to speak. Ms. Russell again, right?
Yeah, Spence.
Spence, I'm sorry, Ms. Spence.
And I never said my address, two oh four Willow Green, so.
You had written it down, so.
Oh, thank you. So I just, um. In, with everything that happened in the earlier session. I was surprised and I would like a little clarity of understanding by what you meant. By your statement. That. Just wanna make sure I read it here correctly. That you were disappointed that some staff couldn't come to attend, am I correct in that the teachers are? On break, they're not on class, they're not being paid for their time, so what was the purpose? Of making that statement that you were disappointed that there weren't teachers present?
I don't think we respond.
Yeah, this isn't a.
Oh, they can't respond?
No, no, no.
So then, I will follow up with an email.
We can follow up with you, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, uh, moving on to personnel. Um, may I have a motion and a second on the personnel items one and two?
So move?
Second.
Okay, so any discussions on personnel, we have teaching and administrative and then, um. Sorry, uh, service personnel, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, um. That concludes our, uh. Meeting for tonight, um, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, um, we have already had our executive session. Um, so we will not be, um, going that, this will actually officially end the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.